Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 9th, 2024 General Committee Meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish, guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first, and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Rodney, would you please say a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fochay.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm here.
Ms. Harris, welcome.
Here.
Ms. Harris, Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Tysard is going to be a little bit late this evening. Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yep.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Fochay. Before we begin with the next agenda item, I just wanted to take a point of privilege to congratulate all of our newly elected local officials that were sworn in today at the St. Bernard Parish inauguration ceremony. So we want to congratulate President Pomes and all of the council men and women that were sworn in today. And I also wanted to thank and give some kudos to our Chalmette High ROTC and the Chalmette High Voices that took part in the ceremony to lead that ceremony. So congratulations, and you all did a great job. Okay, agenda item number two is a request to appear by our newly-elected state representative for District 103, Mr. Michael Bayham. He is on his way to the meeting. He is coming from a meeting at the Capitol and running a few moments late. So if it's okay, we'll just move that agenda item down to when he arrives. All right, agenda item number three is an education committee item. Ms. White?
Thank you. Yeah, we have the Battle of New Orleans Agenda 3.1, and I don't know who's going to speak with us.
I think Mr. Kassar is here, joining us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's Mr. Kassar and many affiliates. This was a gigantic effort. I can only feel for what Andrew Jackson and the people of New Orleans did when they actually did this, as opposed to pretend like they did it. Many things to share with you guys, and the reason I've asked these ladies to join me. In your paperwork, if you will, Sarah helped us in realizing we've got to, as we try to move this project forward, establish a visual, to establish a product that people see and recognize and understand. And Sarah was a great help to us in the deck cards, as well as the stuff that appeared on social media, as well as the billboard of the Miro Foundation across from Walmart. In all reality, these things need to happen weeks before they did this year, but, you know, this is a job beyond explanation, ladies and gentlemen, in the magnitude of things that need to be done. And the good news in this is more and more people are showing an interest and realize the value for both the community and very especially for our students. And I guess that would really be the next logical place to start. In the second page that you guys look at, before we do, Sarah, would you like to talk a little bit about the visuals?
Oh, please do. Sure. Well, I believe that this logo was made by Sabrina Schmidt a number of years ago, who happened to be on-site during that weekend doing plein air painting, like painting the scenery live, which I thought was really a cool tieback. But yeah, this is just a rack card. It's something to kind of help orient the people who are like there, because when they just step out into this big field, there's like cannon blasts happening, people talking here, music. So I feel like there's a chance for people to be a little overwhelmed. So this is the beginning stages of us trying to help point people into a direction, you know? If there's this happening at this time, hopefully next year we can add like a map where there's like a "you're here right now, travel in this direction to go and see the encampments, talk to the pirates" that way. So this will hopefully grow, and it'll be like a brand and a fully-realized identity. Maybe there could be like, you know, volunteer shirts that people could be wearing so that you can identify people, just visuals to kind of help, I don't know, brand this whole event, because it is a lot of, it's a big effort, and it's a lot of work, and I feel like this also helps to kind of fully realize the experience.
Thank you, Sarah. How's that for right off the cuff?
Very good.
Amazing you are. The next page talks about the numbers of students that attended. So the curriculum has changed on the state level, and Louisiana history is no longer a separate item, but Louisiana history has been incorporated into American history, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And this year, being the first of that, the Battle of New Orleans experience occurs within the seventh grade. Previously, we've invited eighth graders. This year, we invited seventh graders. Previously, we invited just students who were honor students because of trying to control the numbers on-site. This year, we took a giant step and brought all seventh graders, and it worked, it worked very well, huh, ladies?
Yeah.
As well as fourth graders. Now, the craziness of this situation is this level of local history is now being taught at the first-grade level, and bringing first graders to this would be a little bit much. And we've kind of made a collaborative decision administratively that our third-grade students will go to museum days at the Aslanyo Museum annually, and our fourth graders will go to the Battle of New Orleans experience. Is, hopefully, there'll be multiple types of those experiences to have, so that the curriculum that exists can be made alive, can be made relevant, to take advantage of those few opportunities where children can see, hear, touch, and smell the experience. And it was amazing having, over the course of the day, with the rain threat, and oh my God, when is it going to blow up, and all of those things, almost 1,200 kids on-site, and it worked really smoothly. It really did. Thanks to all of our teachers. The principals were extremely supportive in the constant telephone calling of how things are going, Dawn Lala in the bus garage. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm not just stretching these details. This hardly touches the magnitude of details this took to securely do this, right, ladies? And so our fourth graders, our seventh graders had the experience, and so many have asked, how can we expand this, which is a perfect segue to talk about Jessica and the incredible work that her students did. Jessica teaches the young men and women at Chalmette High School that want to begin that journey as teachers. And if you'll put your attention up top, Jack, Jackson has wonderfully put together a montage of both video and still pictures that Sarah and I and Jack put together. It's interesting to see both adults, this was our orientation, you could see St. Bernard Middle and Goche as they experienced, why are we doing this, and what's happening in this space? And then from there, kids moved to the various places, and as cannons exploded, kids jumped, the ground moved, and suddenly people had a sense of what it must have been like to live in New Orleans as literally, as history records, the ground quaked. Can you imagine the fear of the most powerful army in the world being upon us to take the city? And it is so critically important that we can deliver that message to every generation of young person, that St. Bernard has the privilege of hosting the last event that ends colonialism in America and launches us as a nation. And that story has been cheated from us for a very long time, which we'll talk about in a second. But before we do that, I'm going to ask Ms. Janik to talk about the wonderful experiences and the great gift that her high school kids provided everybody. Jack, why don't you roll some more of those pictures for us, as you do?
So I thought the best way to get a picture of what happened at the event was to ask the preeducators to reflect on that experience, and so I just wanted to share some of the things that they wrote down.
This is the kids right there, if you'll look real quickly.
Yeah, that was them. It was 22 of them. One of them said, "I found out what it was like to work with a range of students coming from all the different schools. I stood in front of a bunch of little kids and teenagers that probably didn't want to listen to me ramble on about blanket making. So I had to get creative, think on my feet, and figure out what would make the students most interested in that subject." Another one said, "This experience helped me practice my teacher voice. I gained experience on how to relay information to kids in a way that would make them ask questions. This is a valuable experience for the younger students attending because they are able to have fun learning outside of their classrooms, and my favorite part was their excitement." Another student said that, "I felt like I learned a lot alongside the students. This hands-on experience helps students make a real connection to our local history. This is an up-close and interactive history lesson." Another one said, "I appreciate how I was able to expand on my communication and interpersonal skills." And then the last one I have here is, "I learned that it was important to tailor the presentation to the audience. How I presented the information depended on the age of the student." So in our pre-educator course, it's a foundations of education class, and we focus a lot on education theory. And the students get a lot of interaction in the classrooms by observing, just watching what's happening. So they haven't really had a chance to get up in front of anyone and put this skill to practice. So it was a very unique experience for them to be able to interact with over 1,000 of our students that day, and we really appreciate Ms. Kassar and Ms. Strain for inviting us to attend, and we also really appreciate the fact that St. Bernard Parish Schools like really support this event. We have one student who's so excited because she's really into historical reenactment, and they're going to be getting fitted for their period dress so that they can be part of a regiment next year. And teaching the Battle of New Orleans and how people lived in 1815 was really interesting to some of these students, and they said, "When you're doing something fun, you want to try again." So we had a handful of them actually show up on Saturday to volunteer for their full day, for the community event that occurred on Saturday, because they were having so much fun on Friday. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janik. Appreciate it, you guys. There's, what did those kids do? If you look at your lavender-colored sheet, these are some of the things that, once the kids came on-site, besides the big reenacting experience of cannons and guns and men looking at one another into a battle situation, there were these experiences of, that Ms. Janik's kids were able to show and tell and explain, and one of your own, ladies and gentlemen, we kind of recruited Ms. Jackson because we had a candle-making experience, and there was live coal that was involved, and we felt like we needed a volunteer adult to be in that situation. And her son Wyatt has been so incredibly enthusiastic about this, which brings me to the conclusion that, just like Wyatt, there are so many other young people in our schools that this stuff matters. There's Wyatt right there. And Wyatt was invited by the adults who are intense reenactors to actually march Friday night. They marched in the French Quarter, and Wyatt didn't want his mother with him, and Wyatt was one of the soldiers. And some of our high school boys that were part of the drum corps did all this, and what an amazing experience. These men and women come literally from all over the country to share their knowledge, their skill, their enthusiasm. We had a group of ladies that came from Wisconsin, a group of ladies who come regularly from Houston, men and women literally from all over the country who share the passion. And as they all say, St. Bernard, New Orleans, is the most important part of this story. And our story has been so forgotten for so long, and it's really a privilege and an opportunity to help bring that to life. And to that, appropriately, to say the thank yous that are so, so very necessary. And please understand, I don't do this just to waste time, but it is so critically important. The vision and the dedication of the following names have helped to revive, I think, such a critical piece in our community. Obviously, the Miro Foundation with the use of land, and without their funding, this would not have been able to occur over the past three years, as this reenactment program has basically come back to life. St. Bernard Parish Tourism and Parish Government, those financial and political forces, and then ultimately, at this point, St. Bernard Parish Schools, because we've been the workforce that has really put this back together, ladies and gentlemen. Charlene and Tim Strain have worked beyond what any human being should be expected to do through the course of these three years, right, you guys? The dedication and the vision on the part of those two people has been amazing. You know, it's a fine line when working with reenactors, they want accuracy. This isn't Mardi Gras. They don't refer to this stuff as costumes. It's historic dress. And you've got to work within those guidelines if you're going to create a program that's going to have efficacy. And so Charlene has had to juggle that with everyone in the community to try to make that happen, and we've been, I think, incredibly successful this year. We had just at 100 people who had registered to be reenactors with us. So that was an incredible experience for all of us, because obviously, the more of those people that are present, the richer the experiences for our students and ultimately the community. Jason Dewey and Barbara Cosay and the crew literally put the campsite back together again this year, putting up numbers of tents, setting up camp, moving a small army of materials to create, am I right? To create a presence that becomes relevant, to the point that on Friday, for our last reenactment, three park rangers came from the park service and were thrilled at what they saw. And I guess that's a perfect point to make a very important point to you guys. It's very easy for people to say, "Well, why in the world are you doing that at an alternative site rather than at the National Park?" Well, it's real simple, but very sad. Under federal law at this point, there can be no point-to-point contact. All you can do at the park is fire a gun or fire a cannon into nothingness. There can be no head-to-head contact. And these men and women that do this want to do this with some degree of real experience. And so all of the major historic parks through the country have an alternative site, so that if there's going to be any type of conflict reproduction, that there's a site where you can legally do that, with insurance and all of those necessary pieces. So what needs to happen as we go forward with this, ladies and gentlemen, is these people are the voice of this message every day of the year. For that period of time whenever reenacting experiences occur, there needs to be an alternative site so that it can occur. Ms. Janik, with her amazing kids, without Chalmette High School one more time, it would be almost impossible to do this. Wayne Warner, from the time our student taught just a few years ago, just a few years ago, has constantly said, "We've got to do what we can to keep this message alive." And I think he's thrilled to support us, right? With whatever we can, with student action, and we see a growing level of that on a continual level. Annalisa and Ariana, putting almost 40 kids in period clothing and having them dance literally to the point that the feet was probably quite sore at the end of Friday and Saturday. Mr. Ronnie Abear in the carpentry department helped build some things that was on-site. Obviously, Bill Hyland, who is the voice of so much of what we do. Katie Tomasio-Gillis-Mcclusky, Dennis Bradley came and volunteered through this process. Vijay Dotree, Ms. Jeannie Bacon from Chalmette High School has been an amazing force in creating the artisticness of what we're trying to do. Dawn Lala has been a saint dealing with the busing of this situation, you guys. And obviously, all of our elementary and middle school principals have been so supportive. They believe that children need to see education, feel education, smell education. So to conclude all of this, I think the thing that we need to say to the nation is that America, its final delivery occurred here. What those men who signed that Declaration of Independence started was concluded at the plains of Chalmette. And we have the privilege of having such an incredible voice in the delivery of the nation. At the same time, think about this, January 8th, 1815, for the first time, a people in Western civilization no longer bowed a knee to a king or a queen. And it was the launch of freedom that we continue as Americans to attempt to build and to understand. The day after the battle, women still didn't vote, and Black people were still slaves, but the journey has continued, and we continue to build and understand and interpret the privilege of what real freedom is unlike any other people in the world. That's why we do this, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kassar, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you all, Mr. Kassar. I know this is something that you are so passionate about for so many years, to truly bring this to life for our students, and so thank you for your leadership. As you mentioned, this takes, requires such a valiant effort in terms of organization, strategizing to make sure that the schedule for all the students works, you know, around weather patterns, you know, on the bus schedule and things of that nature. So, you know, for those of us that are former teachers, you know, we know that these are those core memories that really make history come to life for our students, and when they look back on their elementary, middle school experiences, they're going to remember this.
We hope so.
You know, and remember.
Thank you.
And so we want to thank you for all of your hard work, and again, all of our partners at St. Bernard Parish Tourism Commission and St. Bernard Parish Government and the Miro Foundation, who fund this event and make that property at the woodlands available for use. So thank you so much.
And, you know, a couple more things I just realized. You know, the overwhelm of trying to put all this together in your head and really talk about it. Such an important person that I forgot to mention in the initial is my secretary, Ms. Jeannie Lannister, y'all. Without Jeannie, Hadas, you know, she helps hold it all together and the communication and the multiple pieces. Jeannie is such an asset to all of us, more than we realize. Then on a fun level, Saturday night was, it is annually a way of saying thank you to these men and women who come at their own expense to celebrate and to do this with us. And there was an opportunity to have a wonderful dinner and ball at the Historic Courthouse, which took place on Saturday night. That's what this is about. And probably the most fun of the whole thing was that the high school kids who volunteered on Saturday, which were many of our alumni as well, look up and you'll see them right up here. The students got to do ballroom historic dance, and it was like line dance, just like you'd see from Pride and Prejudice, and it was a hoot. They had a great time. They really did. The reenactors enjoyed watching the kids because they had the energy to do it, so it was a great experience. Thank you, guys, so very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment, I just want to make a comment, you know, and thank Mr. Kassar and everyone that he mentioned. And I know this is a collaborative community effort with so many entities involved, but I think a lot of people don't realize who the workforce is, the workers that make this thing happen. And to be perfectly honest, it resides in the school system.
Yes.
You know, when you look at the people that we supply, the materials, the events that we coordinate, I do want to reinforce what Mr. Kassar was saying. I mean, everyone from, you know, our bus schedules are impossible to actually do, getting kids to school, getting them to all these events. So our transportation department, our maintenance department, as he mentioned, with Jason Dewey and Barbara Cosay, setting up everything, taking down everything, all of these, all of these activities are so labor-intensive. Then the kids that are coming, the preparation that they have to do to make the event possible, and our administrators at the school, and you have to realize the way a school runs, and we've got to feed all these kids. So our cafeteria people have to make adjustments on, "Oh, we're going to feed them before they go. We're going to feed them when they come back. How are we going to work this and extend these hours and make all of this stuff happen?" And then our teachers, who, you mean, the kids are going to be out of class again today to go do these kinds of things, but they willingly, and they, as they know, these things are valuable experiences for the kids that they don't get in the classroom. But every activity, many of the really major activities in the community, is our kids and our employees and our people who provide sort of the unheralded work at that ground level to make it happen. So to all of our people, you know, from Mr. Kassar, you know, Ms. Felt, Ms. Janik, all of our administrators, our cafeteria ladies, our bus drivers, our maintenance people, thank you for helping to make this such a great experience for our kids and really for our community as a whole, because none of this would have happened without our students and our people.
That's true.
So thank each and everyone.
You know, even on that point, you know, some of the bus drivers come here and eat lunch, and it was an opportunity on Wednesday to share with them, ladies, we just really need you all to be so on it, because at a moment, the rain could come in and you're going to need to, and, you know, that kind of dedication of putting what we're doing and kids first is paramount. That gives you the security to try to move forward and do so. Thank you, guys, again.
Thank you, Mr. Kassar. Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, we are going to now return to agenda item number two and acknowledge our newly-elected state representative for District 103, Mike Bayham, who has traveled back quickly from a meeting in Baton Rouge already to be with us this evening to say a few words.
Thank you.
Welcome.
They let me out just in time for Baton Rouge traffic at 4:00, which sent me right into New Orleans traffic at 6:00, so I apologize for being tardy. I just wanted to come by today. Yesterday, we had the inauguration, and we are in the midst of setting up an office in St. Bernard. We're waiting for the current occupant to vacate, and then we'll move in and we'll have all of our facilities in place. However, I did want to convey this to the members of the school board. I plan on meeting with all of you in small groups prior to the regular session in March, and I'll have my legislative assistant, who is a former councilwoman, Wanda Alcon, try to coordinate things, meet with Ms. Doris, meet with the union representative for the teachers. Wanted to do this before every regular session. Now, we're going to be very busy this year, as we are already going to have Now, we're going to be very busy this year as we are already going to have two special sessions before March. In fact, it starts this Monday. So, we're going to try to work things around availability. And like, the idea of meeting in smaller groups is to make sure that we don't violate the sunshine law so that we can't have a quorum at these meetings. But just if you are interested in visiting to discuss issues that are important to the school board, I'd love to sit down with everybody. It's important that we have our state-led, we only have one voice in the state Capitol from St. Bernard. Hundred and forty-four legislators, only one person lives in St. Bernard. So, that's a big burden for whoever has this seat to carry. So, but I want to make sure all of our representatives, all of our stakeholders have their voices heard. I cannot say that we're always going to agree on all of the issues, but you will have an opportu, we, we will talk, we will be engaged. And on top of that, if any member of the school board is in Baton, in the state Capitol while I'm in, while we're in session and I'm available, if I'm not in the middle of a committee meeting or they're about to do a vote, you can count on me to spend some time visiting with you. I want you to know that you are representatives of people of this community. I respect that as a state representative. And you come up to Baton Rouge if you want to visit, talk a little bit. I'll do whatever I can to meet with you. So, that's basically it. We'll have that office open hopefully sometime next week. And once we have our final schedule set up, because they're going to be putting us back to back, we'll try to make something work out where we can meet with all of the school board members. And we're going to do this with the council members in addition to town hall meetings across the parish before March. So, it's going to be very aggressive, it's going to be very, we're going to have to crunch a lot of stuff in, but just wanted to share that with you. And I appreciate you all giving me this opportunity to come speak to you all tonight.
Thank you, Representative Bayham. Thank you for being here on just your second day in office to come and speak with us this evening. We really appreciate the open lines of communication. We want to remain engaged and good partners with you. We want to invite you to see the, all the wonderful things that are taking place in our school system and within our schools. So, thank you for being here tonight. At this time, are there any other board members that want to make a comment?
I just want to say thank you for being here. Thanks for showing up, and we're looking forward to working with you during your term.
Thank you very much and look forward to visiting with everybody.
And I do want to thank Representative Bayham as well. He reached out to me immediately. And of course, we know each other over the years, so we had open lines of communication. But Mike did reach out immediately and make that pledge that he would meet with us, work very closely, and listen to any of the concerns that we would have and help us wherever he could with the state legislatures.
Congratulations again, and thank you for being with us, Representative Bayham. Thank you. Okay, now we will return to agenda item number four, which is personnel items. And we have Ms. Pritchard here with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. You should have the changes from our last meeting in front of you. We've been busy once again. We did just put out a little Facebook ad on our website page. We are looking for paraeducators. And thanks to Mr. Morales, Tony Morales, we, we can test people who are interested in being paraeducators now here at central office. They have to first have a high school degree. And once they meet that requirement, they either have to have an associate's degree or pass the Tabe. And so, now we're doing that here. So, if anyone is interested in becoming a para, please contact me. Also, we are looking for bus drivers. You need a CDL, but we are, we are welcoming and hiring bus drivers, so.
Any questions? If there are no questions, thank you, Ms. Pritchard.
Okay, thank you.
All right, agenda item number five is an executive item. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamoyne. Item five point one is consideration of adopting the Code of Conduct for Louisiana school board members. In your packet, you'll find the resolution. And we'll read this into the record at the next, at our regular meeting. But if you want to take a look at it now, have any discussion? I'm sorry?
I think Ms. Felt wanted to make a comment.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Hi, guys. Long time no see. All right, so, January is School Board Member Recognition Month. We are honored to celebrate you this month, our school board members, for your dedication and commitment to our schools and to our students. You work to ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to learn and to grow. Celebrating School Board Member Recognition Month is one way for us to say thank you for all that you do. Parish President Louis Pomez will officially proclaim January as School Board Member Recognition Month and will join us at our regular scheduled meeting at the end of the month to present that proclamation. I think, I think they signed it all today, his new council. Coinciding with that is the paper in front of you. The observance of School Board Member Recognition Month is the Louisiana School Board Association, or LSBA. They're encouraging all school boards to adopt the LSBA Code of Conduct for Louisiana school board members. This Code of Conduct serves as a set, as a set of guiding principles that all school board members should strive toward. You have that Code of Conduct in front of you, and I believe, as you said, you'd be yelling over that, I think, at your next meeting. And that's all. So, thank you for all that you do. We recognize you this month. We appreciate you. Love you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Long?
One quick question. It seems like we, we've done this last year also. Is this something we're going to do annually?
Yes.
We have to do it annually?
Well, it's something that you can do. You don't have to. But it is something recommended, you know, by the School Board Association as a responsible public school board member.
Okay, okay. I thought once we put it into the policy, it would, you know, it would, it would just carry forward. But that's fine. Thank you.
Mrs. Lamoyne?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board.
A motion by Mrs. Lamoyne. Do I have a second? Mr. Long?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Long. All in favor? Please vote.
Whoops. Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Felt. Item five point two is consideration of resolution date, time, and place of general committee and regular monthly meetings.
And what this does is set the dates and times and places of our committee meetings and regular meetings as the second and fourth Tuesday of the month for the full year, with some exceptions around holiday times. So, this is what they would be. The exceptions are noted here. And at the regular meeting, then, we can adopt these dates, and then we will publish it on our website.
Mr. Long?
Ms. Foche, I noticed one of the exceptions, excuse me, is, excuse me, December tenth for the regular meeting. So, that's going to be, we're going to be combining the committee meeting and the regular meeting on the same night, correct?
And we're going to make that plan on the resolution, should say for, well, for the regular meeting, right. Because it is the second Tuesday, so the committee meeting will be first, and then the regular meeting will immediately follow it.
Good, good.
So, we'll publish it in that way. So, if, if a date is not on here, then every committee meeting will be the second Tuesday of the month. Every general meeting will be at the fourth Tuesday of the month. And if any exception exists, these are the four that we have, and it is around holiday periods.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Lamoyne?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board.
A motion by Mrs. Lamoyne to send it to the full board. A second by Mrs. White. All in favor? Cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, item five point three, consideration of adopting revisions of school board policy CG. See, Mr. Morales is here. How are you doing today, sir?
Wonderful, wonderful. And I hope you all are doing well as well.
Well, good. Tell us a little bit about policy CG, administrative records.
So, just to give you a quick overview, all six of these are updated policies, so none of these are new policies. As far as CG, it is administrative records. It comes from Act two hundred and forty-seven of the twenty twenty-three regular session. Act two forty-seven regards fees for duplication of public records. It states, "Any custodian who elects to establish and collect such fees shall establish a reasonable fee schedule and post a schedule where it can be readily assessed by the public." I just want to let everyone know, we already had that in place before this actual update. So, this is already on our website. You can get on it, anyone who wants to request a public record. It, it's there, and it says our fee schedule and all. So, I just want to let you all know that's already in, in our place. Also, this policy has been revised to require that the schedule be posted where it can be readily assessed by the public. Again, we already do that. Those policies have also been updated to include the information in a new section, which expands on duplication of records. Another little section includes suggesting information addressing disposal of records. And all of these policies, I know Ms. Angie thankfully scanned them for you and sent them out to you. So, if, hopefully, you got to look at them before. But as always, in here is the additions and subtractions in blue and red, as well as what the new policy would look like if it is passed.
Any discussion? Any comments from board members? Mrs. Harris?
When do we, when does the school board vote to set the cost of the fees? Is it, I mean, obviously, we, you all did it in the past. How often is that revisited? Does it need to be revisited? Does there anything in the law that says that it has to be revisited every five to ten years, or?
So, not that I'm aware of it, it just says that if we do decide to charge fees, that we shall establish a reasonable fee schedule. On our actual policy, it says that public records requests are required to pay a dollar per page for all copied documents. Additional charges will apply by mailing for copies to the requister. And then Act three thirty-seven amended revised statute of forty-four thirty-two provides that fees charged for public records may include transmission of electronic copies of public records. A fat, a flat fee of twenty-five dollars would be charged for electronic copies that require copying and scanning of part copies. So, we can't charge for electronic files, but anything that we have to scan and send will be a flat fee of twenty-five dollars. But as far as revisiting, that, that I assume can be done at any point.
Right, we said that several year, a few years back. And we think it's adequate at this point, but that, that's what we actually charge people.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, how often that was, when it was revisited, if it needed to be revisited.
I, I think at this point, that's a reasonable amount to charge. I wouldn't up that at any point. I think it's reasonable.
I, we, I went through a few different school districts, public records requests, policies, and fee schedules, and we're right, right about where we should be.
And then the only other question I have is that does, I know that you, there's a waiver for people who can't pay. Does it determine, how does it determine who? It says unless the person is exempted from providing reimbursement. How do we determine who does not have to pay?
If they request it, we'll take a look and listen to them and make that. It's subjective. We're not going to, we don't get into the issue of supplying, like, income documents and those types of things. So, it's, it's a pretty standard fee. It's a reasonable fee. If someone does come to us and says they can't pay, then we talk with them and make a determination at that time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion?
And to be honest, you know, like, they can come inspect it at any time with absolutely no cost. So, if they come during business hours, wish to look at any of the records, it's made available to them at no cost. Thank you.
Anybody would like to make a motion? Mr. Long?
Yes, I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board the five point three, is, is that the one we?
Yes, CG.
CG, yes. I'd like to recommend that policy change to the full board.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Do I have a second? Okay. Hey, I'm sorry. We have a, first by Mr. Long, second by Ms. Lee. All in favor? Please cast your votes. Lee Boma?
Motion passes ten zero.
DFG, which is five point four, is gifts and donations. Again, it is an updated policy based on Act three forty-six of the twenty twenty-three legislative session. Act three forty-six requires that school boards enumerate the details of the contents of donations in a document made publicly available on its website. The policy also includes additional statutory information regarding gifts. So, again, there's, there's a lot of details here that, and I know Ms. Angie sent it out last Friday, but if you have any questions, we'll try to answer those at this time.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, or Mr. Long?
Let's see. I guess, Ms. Foche, my question would be to you. It seems like on page two of this, this policy change, it mentions, "School funds shall not be used to provide any form of gift to an employee, and no employee shall accept such gift." I'm wondering how that affects the stipends that we have been giving out over the last few years to our employees?
Which, if it stipends to attend different events and different, uh, different professional development, that's perfectly fine. That wouldn't just be a donation for nothing in return. They're actually working or have performed something for which they're receiving those funds.
So, it would work the same for the perfect attendance awards that we give out every year? Okay. That was my concern.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Morales, so was this, this is something that's already?
Yes, sir. We already have these policies established. These are just a few updates that they pass via the law, and then we look at it and try to, try to amend our policies to match what the law says.
And let me make a comment on this, because there is going to be something that we're going to, we're going to be looking at in detail. And we're trying to get some clarification on it. Because if you look the way the law reads, it's we're supposed to post the details and contents of donations. If you read it to the exact letter, possibly, I mean, if somebody says, "Here's five dollars, I'd like you to put it toward your little student of the year thing," or, "I'm going to donate some water for you to do at the breakfast," or whatever. I don't know the extent, you know, some of this has to do with the ethics clause about accepting gifts. And there are monetary thresholds for that, as we all know, because we've been through our ethics training. However, with the passage of this particular law, for example, on our website the other day, Ms. Rao from, they, they came in that company, and I didn't even know, but they donated, what, a thousand dollars' worth of these art supplies and things to the class. And we did a little thing on Facebook. Well, I really wouldn't know anything about that or smaller donations in those respects in many, many cases. So, if we're going to have to do every minute donation that someone makes, we also get donations sometimes where people say, "I want to be anonymous." I've had people give and say, "Hey, I want y'all to give this to the kids." They don't want a letter saying, "You have donated this for their taxes or anything." They want to make an anonymous donation. So, I'm not exactly sure how we would publish then their name and the contents of what they're giving to the schools. So, we may have to then eventually go to every school and every principal and say, "You're going to have to keep a running donation of anything anybody gives you throughout the year," and then update these things. Or, I think the intention of the law was that if you do business with people, or people are trying to do business with you, and they come in and give donations, hopefully, to get some of your business, maybe that is kind of what they were looking for, or if it's a huge donation. But when we're talking about a person walking in and handing a principal and says, "Look, I know you're doing the Christmas drive. I want to give you this twenty-five dollars and put it toward a donation for the needy families." Do we have to then go and take and write all these things down and put on our website the name of every person, exactly what they gave us and what they told us was? the name of every person, exactly what they gave us and what they told us it was for? It's a monumental undertaking. So I am talking with the attorneys with the LSBA, to be perfectly honest, to see what is a reasonable interpretation of this. And I know other school systems in the state are grappling with the same thing. I can understand larger gifts and donations, but it's going to be extremely cumbersome if we have to, as a result of this, gather that information, you know, and put it on there and try to do it with a real measure of accuracy. So at that point, I'm just giving you a heads up on it. We put the language in here as the law dictates, but its execution, I need to get a little more clarity, and at some point, we might come back and put some thresholds in. I'm gonna see legally what we can do in that respect.
So Mr. Bayham shouldn't have left. He should have, he should have stayed for a little bit.
Yeah, we could say, maybe y'all could put a little threshold on this or something that would make it more reasonable.
Mrs. Harris?
While we're speaking with the attorneys, would you ask them if this applies to teachers providing supplies and gifts to students in classrooms? Because technically, that is a donation to the school, right? And if they're gonna have to document the amount of, yeah.
Now, teachers can put that on their taxes and such, but as you say, is that a donation that we would then have to acknowledge in some way? And then how do we acknowledge it? If the teacher brings it to us, so we gotta bring us a receipt so we can see the monetary donation that's going into the classroom? I mean, every teacher at the beginning of the year, especially, I don't want to pick on any specific level, but you walk into these elementary classrooms, and they are just, I mean, beautiful, and what teachers put in, and especially at that level, they're always buying things that they like to put into those rooms. Even though we supply a great deal, we know that teachers do this all the time. So then it becomes, "Well, give us a receipt for this, so we can document that you put, you know, eighty-three dollars and thirty-two cents." And so you're absolutely right.
Yeah, the P B I S stuff that they do in their classrooms, and all of that.
So I think this was whoever authored this law, and I'm looking at the person, the representative who did on, had discussions with this particular gentleman. He's from southwest Louisiana, and he's very, you know, if you notice this particular, he's the only one who sponsored this piece of legislation. If you notice, there's also a section on here about community service hours, and he put in the law now that community service hours for kids shall not count toward academic coursework or graded work in any public school. So when we, when we're talking about kids doing community service hours, if a teacher in the class is trying to work with kids and says, "Okay, you know, as part of your project, if you do this, this would count towards so much of a grade," or whatever, I mean, we got a law here that says you can't do that now. And you know, understand where some people might think that shouldn't happen, but on the other hand, they don't understand kids are learning, and part of learning is exposing them to things. And sometimes, even with your own children, you're saying, "Well, come on, let's go do this, and then we'll go do something fun," to try to get them hooked on the joy of giving and going out and doing these things. So if you've got teachers who are trying to encourage kids through their organizations they're in and in their classrooms to at least try some of this, to get them hooked on that, well, you can't even say to a kid, "Well, you know, make that part of your project grade," or whatever. So some of these things get so ridiculous, and, and I don't mean to demean anybody or any legislator or whatever, but it creates an issue without, to me, it's not just, it's not well thought out. And the intent of it sometimes is not what happens when you're trying to implement it. So you're trying to implement it according to the law. We, of course, if we have any major donations or anything, we have to. But I, I tell you, I had, I had a lady who donated ten thousand dollars for a specific purpose for the schools, and wanted to be completely anonymous. Do not, do not, I don't want anyone to know where that came from. And there are many people who do that as part of their giving. They don't do it for recognition, and they don't want the recognition. So how do I balance that? I just put on there, "Anonymous donor," you know, which in essence potentially violates it. So it's, it's, I don't know, things that we have to look through. So I'm just saying, we're revising our policy in accordance with the law, but we may be coming back to have further discussion on some reasonable thresholds if I can work with legal, so legal staff to see if there's some wiggle room with this and some practices with this. It may even go back to talking with this legislator to do some reasonable revisions of this in this session. Okay?
With that, do we have a motion? Mrs. Lamoy?
Yeah, I will go ahead and make a motion that we send this to the full board for consideration. And I know, Ms. Vochi, hopefully you'll get some additional information from our legal team before the next meeting, where we could kind of talk through what, what this will look like in execution.
A motion by Ms. Lamoy, a second by Mrs. White. All in favor, cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
All right, next is E B B H, the use of automated external defibrillators, or AEDs. This was, again, was an updated policy based on Act two-three-four of the two thousand and twenty-three legislative section. The policy makes it a requirement in all elementary, middle, and high schools to have AEDs on the premises, and that any such school that sponsors any interscholastic event shall have an AED and a trained AED user who is also trained in first aid CPR at the event. In addition, the schools shall have a cardiac emergency response plan to reduce death from cardiac arrest and at any interscholastic athletic event. Now, with that being said, this, again, is an updated policy, this is something we've already had in place for years. As a matter of fact, next session, Ms. Lori McGinnis is going to do a presentation to all of you about our AED usage, where they're at, where they're at every, you know, event that we have, you know, interscholastic athletic event. So we already have these things in place. I want to let y'all know that, and she's gonna come in a couple of weeks to do a presentation based on this information.
Any discussion? Questions? Comments? So when we say all schools, if we go to a private school, do they have to have this too? Or do we have to bring it?
No, we don't bring it. It is the, the host school is supposed to do this. Now, a lot of times, these, a lot of these laws don't necessarily pertain to non-public schools. This one, I think, does, because there's going to be, in fact, I know at the Bessie meeting next week, I mean, I'm not on Bessie anymore, but I know on the agenda next week, there is money that's going to be sent to all of the schools, and I know the non-public schools are getting an allocation as well to put AEDs in, in the schools. So they are supposed to have it at the interscholastic event. So it is the responsibility of the school that is hosting that event. But I do want to say, and I know when Laurie, Laurie's coming, like, you know, Ms. Morales said, she's coming at the regular meeting, and she's gonna go over our emergency response plan, go over where we have these, and it's trained, and I'll tell you, we are well over, I don't know, to a hundred and three hundred people trained on these things already, and they're at every school. In fact, we even have a band member who has a condition, and when that person goes off, we send one with them, just in case, that it's not available somewhere. So if we have a, a student or whatever that we know that there's a potential for usage on that, we're even making those accommodations in an abundance of caution. She's gonna go through the whole plan, she's gonna talk about who has been trained and how we keep that up, and do that as a presentation at the regular meeting in two weeks.
The reason why I mention that is because at Shaman High Saturday, huge wrestling event, huge. I think the, the, the football stadium parking lot was full from overflow from the wrestlers. So if we go to a Jesuits or Brother Martin for a wrestling tournament, are they, do they have to have this as well? That's why I'm asking.
I think so. I think, I'd have to read this, and usually, most of these laws pertain only to public schools, unless it is specified otherwise. And, you know, in looking at this, I'd have to read a little bit more carefully, to be honest. Because this is saying each elementary, middle, and high school shall have an AED, and it does, it does not say public. So I'm assuming this is going to apply to all, because it was a major issue in the legislature this past year. And as, as Ms. Morales has said, we've had the AEDs in place, we made an investment in these things several, a few years back, and we have our response team together and everybody trained who's supposed to be. So this, for us, was not a major issue. Now, we're upgrading the AEDs, because we're going to be getting some of that grant money as well, and we are, you know, upgrading those as well. So she'll be here, and she can answer all those questions at our next meeting, in detail, more in detail.
As a parent of our school, you know, somebody who plays sports in middle school at this time, you know, it is good, I, sitting with Ms. McGinnis and Ms. Vochi to hear these things, to be in place and be trained. You know, it makes me feel better as a parent to know that, that we have these things and have them in place for you. So I felt good when I was reading this, like, all right, we, one more for us, we're doing a great job here, you know, so that was good to hear.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt E B B H, use of automated.
Thank you, Mrs. White. I have a motion by Mrs. White. Second by Mrs. Jackson. All in favor, cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Our next one is I H A D, which is parent conferences. Again, it's an updated policy, and it wasn't really based on any law, it was based on our own policy that we, we realized that we needed to revise some things. So it says, "When the discipline policy was revised in two thousand and twenty-one, necessary changes to discipline conferences information in the parent conferences policy were overlooked and have now been updated. In addition, we have added the term legal to legal guardian, removed the term tutor, and replaced the term pupil with student." So a lot of it is language changes, but if, if you want to look over it now, please, yeah, please go ahead.
Give you a chance to peruse that? Any questions for anyone? Comments? Mrs. Lamoy?
Mr. Morales, it seems like several of the changes here have been made to include phone conferences and virtual conferences as well?
Yeah, I think a lot of what we updated was just based on the times.
Okay.
So that we can have video conferences, phone conferences. We instituted school status a few years ago, so those are recorded, as, as hopefully all of you know, whenever a parent uses school status, they can call and have those conferences, and is recorded both what the teacher or the principal is saying, as well as the parent. So I think a lot of it is just to get in with the times now of, of what is being changed.
And it, it seems to me that this policy just kind of brings up some of the things that were already in place in terms of the video conferencing, school status, and things of that nature.
Yeah, yeah, again, just trying to catch up with the times.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lamoy, seconded by Mr. Long. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Our next one is J G B School Wellness. It was based on Act two hundred and nineteen of the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session. Act two nineteen requires that each public school, which does, it does say public school in this one, which includes any of the grades kindergarten through fifth, provide at least fifteen minutes of recess consisting of supervised unstructured, unstructured free play at each school each day. Again, this is a policy we, as a parish, have had in for countless years, but they have made it law as of this year.
Any questions for board members? Mrs. Jackson?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with a recommendation to adopt.
I have a motion by Mrs. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any other questions, comments? I did notice, too, that it mentioned public school in this one, so.
That's all we can attest to and speak to is public.
When do you become a, do you become a public school when you accept public funds?
That is not a question I am privileged enough to answer.
Stay out of the weeds on that one. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
And last but not least, we have J G C, which is Student Health Services. It's an updated policy we already have in place, and it's based on Act two hundred and sixty-six of the two thousand and twenty-three legislative section, session. Act two sixty-six requires that the Department of Education select a dyslexia screener and provide it at no cost to each public school. The dyslexia screener shall be administered to each student by a classroom teacher in the second half of kindergarten or upon request of a teacher or parent or legal guardian. Now, with that being said, while they did pass this into law, the Department of Education, as far as I know, has not currently selected a screener at this time, but they will be doing that as soon as they see fit. But they did want us to, to amend our policy to recognize that.
Any, any comments, questions? Ms. Vochi? You want to comment on this one?
Other than that, we do screen for dyslexia now. We don't necessarily do it at the second half of kindergarten. It was usually done a little bit later when, you know, the, the educational research used to say a seven or an eight-year-old, remember when you were teaching, seven or an eight-year-old? Now, they want to do a screener at an earlier age, and they are out with RFPs, and they're doing, and they're close to supposedly adopting what that screener will be, and then we will have to implement that at the end of kindergarten, and then even if the child shows no characteristics at that point, anytime along the continuum, if a parent suspects it and would like that child to be re-screened or whatever, then we do accommodate that. And, you know, dyslexia is, it's a, it's a really, I don't know how to term it, but a strange condition. There are, it's all along a continuum. Sometimes it's, it's milder, and I don't know if I'm using the medically correct terms, where kids might be just designated with what we call a five-oh-four plan with some accommodations, and they do fine. Sometimes it much more severely impacts their educational development, and they would qualify under that for special education services. So when children are screened at a very young age and show some signs of that, then we really need to continue to work through them with the interventions and accommodations and see what helps them improve, and then if it's to the point, if we see that it is more severe, then we need to go through more of the formalized special education process.
Do you know if this was something that came from the Department of Education, or was this something that just came out of the legislature?
To be honest, I think this has been from parents and, and throughout. I think it's, it seems to be, I don't know if it's becoming more. I think it seems to be, I don't know if it's becoming more prevalent in children or if it's being recognized more. Kids who are struggling readers, you know, for many, many years, maybe were not diagnosed. You know, I know I've got, in my own family, two of our nine people who have dyslexia, and I know that the processing problem from the written word is very, very difficult. That's why, you know, there are some kids, in fact, and in all honesty, we have three of our students who did not graduate high school this past May that are on 504 plans because of some of this, but could not pass that social studies part of the LEAP test, but could pass all of their coursework, did everything they were supposed to do, but couldn't qualify because they weren't totally special education. But they still do not have a high school department because no one wants to recognize an alternate pathway for those students who are struggling in processing the written word. So it's truly, and then there are many kids that we make accommodations for, and they do well, and they do graduate high school, they go to college. If they don't avail themselves of those services in college, and the colleges now are being pressed more to try to work with students with dyslexia and other types of disabilities, and if they don't seek that out, those are some of the kids who don't make it through that first year of college. And it's even when they're trying because they're really having difficulty in the volume of reading and processing that they have to do. If it's audio, they can do it fine. If it's the written word, it's very difficult for them. So I think it is truly something that we have to look at. There are a couple of schools in the state that are concentrating totally on children with dyslexia. The problem is those kids still don't test well on the LEAP. If you look at the scores of these kids, even in these special schools, if you do it strictly on their performance on the LEAP test, not good. On alternate rubrics that are developed to see how kids are progressing along that continuum, they're doing better. So this is something that people need to look at and accommodate for. Because some of these kids, when you talk to them, you would never suspect it. Some of these are the brightest kids you've ever seen, but they cannot sit and process the written word effectively. So that's my editorial comment for the evening.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? Concerns? Mr. Long?
So the way I understand this, this law is requiring the Department of Education to provide a screener for every public school in the state through the special education department?
No, they will have a screener, which is an instrument. Every teacher in that classroom is going to have to screen that child using that screener to see if the child has characteristics of dyslexia, if they're at the age of five or six or however, if they're displaying any of it at that time. At that point, then we need to intervene with some strategies to see what we can do and really, because, you know, it's not something you say, you know, your eye doctor's looking your eyes, oh, you have this or you have that. It's not that simple. So to see if a child that young really has this condition is a very difficult diagnosis to make. It has to do with patterns of behavior. You have to see how they react to this on these different screeners. I'm not a reading specialist. I can't talk specifically to each and every indicator, but I was always taught that that age, it's very difficult to make that determination. So if that child, though, according to this screener, whatever it's going to look like, demonstrates some characteristics of that, then that at least tells us he's struggling in some way. Maybe he has dyslexia, maybe he doesn't, but we need to do something right away to do some intervention to see. And then as he's getting older, I think it'll become more apparent if it is truly a condition, or maybe he was a struggling reader and the interventions, hopefully, that we do will help him progress.
So once they're checked and it's determined that they may have it, they have to be rechecked year to year?
Oh, we would watch it closely, yeah.
Okay.
You know, and because it's not like a blood test you take and boom, you've got it, or no, you don't have it. It's more of a subjective determination based upon a screening tool that you have. So we would probably err on the side of, oh, we have a struggling child, possibly has some of this, let's try some of these interventions, let's see what we can do. And then it may be he doesn't. You know, as he gets a little bit older, it really doesn't manifest itself that way.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lamoy?
Well, it seemed like a fitting place just to recognize our district's commitment to the science of reading and the added personnel that we made for this school year in terms of adding the additional reading coaches so that we could really prioritize, again, the fundamentals of reading, those pillars of reading in the early levels. So I want to thank the reading coaches and Dr. Salto Famagio for the great work that they're doing, and of course, all of our teachers who are doing great work in the classroom. And with that, I will make a motion that we send this policy to the full board.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamoy. We have a motion by Mrs. Lamoy. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, cast your vote.
And before I hit that, thank you for that comment, and Dr. Salto Famagio is very, she's very much on top of this. She is our expert on this. So she does and has done for years a lot of this screening. So we're very, very fortunate to have her, and she has trained her literacy coaches in some of this. So thank you for that comment. Now I'll get it. Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Back to you, Mrs. Lamoy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warner. Agenda item number six is superintendent's notes. Ms. Vochi?
Just a reminder that at the regular meeting every January, the board elects its officers, so that will be on the agenda at the regular meeting. And if there's any change, we will also have signature resolutions then that have to be enacted at that point. The medical emergency response plan that has to do with the AEDs, we've already mentioned that that will, you know, also be on the agenda. And just want to welcome everybody back from the holidays. You know, the, at the high school especially, a major turnover since we're on the four-by-four block. All of the kids have finished their first semester courses, beginning their second semester courses, so we're in a major change with all of that scheduling, you know, as we speak. And then a reminder that on the 15th, next Monday, is on the Martin Luther King holiday at that point where we will have no school next Monday, and encourage people to participate in the events of that day. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Vochi. And as you said, we want to wish all of our families, teachers, staff, a happy new year, and of course, to all of our board members as well. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mrs. Harris. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.